The time is 7:00 PM. We've returned from closed session. Mr. Kennedy, could you report out? This is a special closed session for the City of Emeryville.
Thank you, Mayor Mora.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
There were no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Councilmember Solomon is absent.
The time is 7:26.
Councilmember Welch?
This meeting is adjourned.
Present.
Vice Mayor Carr?
The time is 7:26.
Present.
And Mayor Mora.
Present.
Thank you.
This is a regular meeting of the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, the roll. Moving to public comment.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent.
Now is the time for public comment.
Councilmember Solomon is absent.
Seeing no members of the public, we can move to the closed session.
Councilmember Welch?
Present.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora.
We'll be taking items 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3 in closed session.
Present.
Thank you.
Ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications? The time is 7:01. Seeing and hearing none.
Recording stopped.
Moving to public comment. Now is the time for public comment. Seeing no members of the public, we can move to the closed session. We'll be taking items 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3 in closed session. The time is 7:01.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
The time is seven twenty-six. We've returned from closed session. Mr. Kennedy, could you report out?
Thank you, Mayor Mora. There were no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
The time is seven twenty-six. This meeting is adjourned. The time is seven twenty-six. This is a regular meeting of the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Councilmember Solomon is absent. Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora.
Present.
Thank you.
Members, do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Councilmember Solomon is absent. Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye. Members, do you have any ex parte communications?
None.
Seeing and hearing none. Now is the time for public comment. Seeing no members of the public, we will move to the consent calendar. Members, do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
Move approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Councilmember Solomon is absent. Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no action items. The time is seven twenty-seven. This meeting is adjourned. The time is seven twenty-eight. This is the regular city council meeting for the City of Emeryville. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still seated. Members, I'll now entertain approval of the final agenda.
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Councilmember Solomon is absent. Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye. The final agenda is approved. Item four, special orders of the day. We have a proclamation of the city council of the City of Emeryville recognizing April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five as Earth Day. Whereas Earth Day is commemorated annually on April twenty-second to demonstrate support for environmental protection, advanced sustainability initiatives, and raise awareness about the challenges facing our planet. And the theme of Earth Day two thousand and twenty-five is our power, our planet, inviting everyone around the globe to unite behind renewable energy and to triple the global generation of clean electricity by two thousand and thirty. And this theme highlights two critical aspects: our collective energy and responsibility, and the shared home we have to protect, our planet. This Earth Day aims to inspire action for a cleaner, fairer, and more sustainable future by focusing on renewable energy such as solar, wind, and geothermal energy. And our power shows how human creative thinking and collective effort can transform our energy systems. Our current reliance on energy is unsustainable. While fossil fuels have historically been essential, they pose a serious threat to our environment and health. The advantages of renewable energy are that they are clean, sustainable, and becoming more affordable. In our planet, we are reminded that we're all responsible for protecting our planetary environment. The goal is to address inequities in energy access and prioritize the health of people and the environment, and now therefore it be resolved by the city council of the City of Emeryville that April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five is hereby proclaimed as Earth Day in the City of Emeryville. And all residents, businesses, and institutions are urged to advocate for policy changes, adopt renewable energy solutions, and work towards a cleaner and more sustainable future for our planet, as proclaimed by the mayor of the city council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We now have item four point two, a presentation from the Police Department for the annual report. Chief Jennings?
All righty, good evening, Vice Mayor Carr, Mayor Mora, and our former First Mayor Corning Welch. So this is going to be a brief overview of our annual report. Normally, luckily I have the three people who have been on my Public Safety Committee who've seen this or a version of this before. Carr just saw it a couple months ago. So you know what it looks like, but it's also for community members who did not have an opportunity to see it. They can see it through on the webpage or the large gallery we have here today. So with that, you see our annual picture we got right here behind us. See a very eclectic, happy group. Next slide. Basically, my message, and my message is always the same. I appreciate the fact that I have a council that has given us the tools and the support to do what we've done, and I definitely appreciate my officers who've gotten the job done, bringing more trust in community engagement with the city. So I can't do it without the officers that we have. Next slide. This is my former command staff. Everyone here is gone besides Acting Lieutenant Dower and PSM Bouzay, but they'll both be leaving shortly also, so that'll be different next year. Next slide. You'll see my main sergeants here. Three of these people will be gone in the next future. And special thanks to Sergeant Pablo Rojas, who actually put the PowerPoint together and is our community engagement liaison. Also, my recruiting and training officer, which is critical to the growth of our organization. Next slide, please. Again, about staffing. You see some pictures, lovely folks that we just hired. One of the highest honors to bring new people into the organization is important to hire good folks. That's the beginning of having a good organization. At one point, one glorious moment, we were totally staffed in October, but that has changed with attrition and injuries, and some people moved on. So you see the numbers right there. And at any point in time, feel free to ask me any questions. We can engage in this. We're going to keep it going. But again, you've seen this before. Next slide, please. Another thing that I'm proud of in our organization is the demographics. You see, we're a very diverse organization by our numbers and by the photos that you saw. We definitely represent the community that we serve. One of the things I'm most proud of is the fact that I've made it intentional to hire great, qualified female officers. The national average for female officers is less than ten percent. We're up to nineteen percent, and we're on our way to get to thirty percent. That's the National Thirty on Thirty initiative that's been put on by the National Chiefs of Police, and I'm formerly a part of that. I'm going to get there. So we're going to get there. Next slide, please. Again, our female statistics, demographics for our sworn, again, seem very diverse. Nice. Next slide, please. Again, so we're here about our primary focus is to thwart crime, drive down crime, drive down the fear of crime. We've done an excellent job of doing that, and this is, however you want to get into it, a very layered, nuanced way of driving down crime that with me and my thirty-four years of experience and my officers with a lot of experience have focused on with a vision of making sure that we're integrated with the growth of the city and also the feeling of togetherness in the city. So most of our crime is property crime. Eighty-five percent of our crime is property crime. We have a rich, diverse commercial area. We have a lot of apartment complexes, and most of our crimes are petty theft based on opportunity to commit those thefts. Next slide, please. Our violent crime, any crime of violence is also, you know, is a threat to our society, the fabric of our society. But our crime rate, again, is low, especially compared to our regional partners. One of the things also I pride myself on is I did a longitudinal study of our crime from two thousand and ten till now, where you'll see across the region that most people, most agencies' crime is down fifteen to twenty percent, if not higher. But a lot of those crimes are down from a high point that they've had. We've never reached our high point in the last fifteen years. Our higher point of crime was two thousand and nineteen, and we've never gotten to that number back yet. So I'm pretty pleased with that number. The numbers went up during, went down during COVID, and then they shot exponentially, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and we're seeing, we've, ours was going up, but we've kept it below that high point number, which is really pleasing for us. Next slide. Again, so when the crime is down twenty percent, the numbers up to right now, we're down another ten to fifteen percent on most crimes compared to last year. So again, this is due to several factors, in my opinion, one being a change in public policy that's going across our region. Another is the fact that we've gotten the flock camera system. Another factor is that we had a significant increase in our staffing. So instead of running overtime to run the day-to-day operations of the police department, we're using the overtime to thwart crime by using some of the grant money that you'll see later on that we've used to put those strategically in areas that where crime was occurring to actually drive down crime further. So multi-layered, and everyone buying in on my vision, and the new hires are very enthused. Next slide, please. Again, breaking down the crime numbers, again, petty theft being the highest. Our crimes of violence are being the lowest, which is, which is great, but, you know, any crime, trying to get to utopia where there is no crime, and you don't need police officers. And then our breakdown by demographics and their arrests. Next slide. Our juvenile arrests have remained consistently low. We consistently return juveniles to their homes, seventy-nine, eighty percent. The one of the juveniles that end up going to Juvenile Hall usually have a warrant for their arrest for some other reason. Possession of a firearm is automatic take to Juvenile Hall. Usually the robberies are, depending how the robbery was committed, was it force or fear, was there actual violence used, they automatically go to Juvenile Hall. So those numbers remain low, which is good for us. That's a win. Next slide, please. To me, this is important, and it really would be more important for the members who have not been on the Public Safety Committee, but this really explains how our use of force is used. Try to give an explanation. So if you were to arrest me and then Mayor Moore put me in a twist lock, and Vice Mayor Moore put me in another twist lock, is one victim, well, one suspect, but two incidents. So the numbers can be skewed in that sense, but every use of force is counted in our, in our matrix, and you can see less than zero-point four percent of our calls for service involve force, which is different from what you see in the news, is different from what you see reading the paper, but that's how California counts our incidents of uses of force. Vast majority of our contacts are traffic and a lot of talking. Next slide, please. Usually with use of forces, there will come complaints. Those are the definitions of our dispositions of uses of complaints. Not really nuanced, either, you know, we have, you'll see the next, we'll just go to the next slide, unless you have any questions. So you'll see our numbers, very part of our transparency portal. All this is on our webpage. You can find all this information that's on there. You'll see that most of our sustained for policy violations, and essentially, every day, this somebody's doing a policy violation. It could be as minor as not having your correct uniform on. So those are policy violations, day to day. But every time that we do an internal affairs complaint, we look at it from top to bottom, and we find policy violations, you see those are sustained, but you don't see any sustained for any force, violence, rudeness. Well, there's some rudeness and sustained policy violation, but the ones that really get us in trouble are the ones we don't like, the mistake of the mind, or the mistake of the heart. Whereas the heart, where your malice, by malice committing, you know, hurting someone, believing in someone, we don't, we don't have that in our organization. And those are borne out in our internal affairs investigations, which are, which are low. Next slide. One of the reasons why I think that our crimes are down, again, nuanced approach, is the flock cameras. Thank you, council, for approving that. Some of the numbers that come with that, two million license plates are scanned monthly. Same license plate can run through the count sixteen times, count sixteen, sixteen other times. But you'll see some of the things, and these are numbers are just from October, when the cameras were fully automated, to December. So this is a short snapshot of how the cameras have affected us. But the most important number, to me, besides the ones we've arrested, is the three ninety-six to one vehicles alerted and the twenty felony vehicles alerted. When officers are alerted, they see it, they go, they drive the car out of town. That anecdotally would be the reason why crime could be down also. So there's several things that go involved with fighting crime. This is a very good tool. City Manager Bellows just had me talk to our state senator regarding getting another federal grant to maybe possibly, we're asking for the rest of the cameras to be paid for through a grant. So we'll see how that goes. So I talked to Luca for quite a bit. I sent our staff report, so we'll see what comes out of that. Next slide, please. My staff, again, my beautiful communications staff with part of my parking enforcement staff, you see the amount of calls. A lot of calls for service. I'm very pleased that our nine-one-one answers are twenty seconds or less, which is integral to people's philosophy that they're going to be served when they call us. We're a full-service organization. We have a, we respond, and I can't say that for, for everybody. You see the amount of calls for service that we have, significant amount of calls, thirty-eight thousand, and the amount of reports are generated, four thousand. Next slide. One person doing this, property and evidence booking, almost two thousand items booked in a year, over two thousand other items purged, that's done with a group on overtime, and five hundred pounds of drugs purged. That's done by one persons, one person, Adrian Robinson, and she's also the one that does all the stats that you see. So I know the Public Safety Committee understands that, anyone who's listening on the, or watching on television. One wonderful person does all that work. Next slide, please. Another one person does our records, with a little help from our, my, my Public Safety Manager Duchess Bouzay. So again, a lot of calls for requests. These things are not easy to do, redacting, finding them, mailing reports out, and sending subpoenas. All this is simply done by one or two people in my organization. Next slide, please. And she's also my chaplain. So a lot of people doing multiple things. Traffic enforcement. So this is one of the things that caused me concern last year when I saw the amount of traffic accidents that we had. Back in the day, well, before any of us, there used to be four traffic enforcement officers. We're down to one, Steve Hindergaard. Everyone's responsible for doing traffic. Every officer is supposed to be doing some, but that number had significantly dropped after COVID. It was like hands off. So I re-energized the folks into doing these things because we want to drive down injury accidents, accidents where people really get, who die. And also, it's proven that when you're having proactive enforcement, that it drives down crime in your town. So you see that there's a twenty-seven increase in traffic stops, seventy percent increase in moving violations. My emphasis to answer some of the qualitative issues regarding our stops is to make sure you're moving, doing moving violations opposed to mechanical violations. So we're looking at things that are going to cause accidents, which is easier for me to defend if something goes wrong during that traffic stop. I'm not caring about expired registration or your cracked windshield unless it's so egregious that you're going to eminently wreck, but I want you to do running red lights, running stop signs, you know, merging crazy. So those are why you see the seventy percent increase. We made an emphasis on that. Parking citations up a nine percent, which is amazing because those doom buggies that we have have been broken on and off. So they really, again, the officers are doing some more parking citations. So that's a significant revenue maker, and also it keeps the flow of traffic in our commerce areas moving, and so that was a nine percent increase. And that one, Mike is gone. It's only, only one parking enforcement officer right now, so that's another vacancy that we're working to fix because they pay for themselves. Next slide, please. Again, more of the traffic collision numbers. Next slide. One of the things that, again, I'm pleased with, that, you know, I had officers buy into doing these grants. There was no way that the command staff could do this on their own. So you see Sergeant Casciano's, Officer Andres, and Officer Hindergaard have taken the helm in helping us write, look, at, procure, and manage these grants. When I first arrived, we were getting the Jack Byrne Grant regularly and the Patrick Leahy Politic Vest Grant, which was an nominal amount of money, about thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars during this four years of building up. We have all these grants up to four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars that we're getting, which is pretty good for a little small police department, but it can't be done without a wholehearted help from my staff. And we continue to seek out other grants when they come up, but they're very hard, you know, you've still got to do your police work. So these are ancillary duties that these officers are taking up. And it's bearing, I think, these are the reasons, one of the reasons why crime is down, because when we do the, time myself out, when, where we do the alcohol beverage ones, we do the officer traffic safety ones, we do those strategically in strategic areas where crime is up, and we can drive crime down because I'll see police officers pulling people over. I think it works. And next slide. Community outreach, again, we've all participated in our community outreach. When I got here, again, it was COVID. We didn't do very much. I looked at the numbers beforehand. I looked at the numbers beforehand, we still didn't do a whole bunch. The National Night Out was a big one for the PD, but we've created other ones. And I think it's definitely created synergy between the police department, the council, commerce. I think it's, uh, I feel like it's really been a wonderful, and it's one of the most, um, joyful things I get to do as a police chief is the holiday toy coat drive. The pink patch part, the back to school, because a lot of kids, we know that's the only school stuff they're going to get. So it's very rewarding, um, with, with those. Matter of fact, coffee with a cop, we're doing one tomorrow, eight to nine-thirty at Starbucks, like advertising. So we're doing one eight to nine-thirty Starbucks at Powell Street. So you want a free cup of, uh, sponsored cup of coffee and a pastry? It'll be at Starbucks on, on, uh, on Powell. Next slide. Again, and I'm huge on training. So my whole thing is about training for leadership, training for competency, core competencies. Five thousand more hours of training when I first got here. It was, we were training, but not the amount that we're, that we're training now. Because, um, I'm focused on getting people to be the best officer, best human they can be. That comes with going to the, one of the, one of my favorites, Interperspectives, where it's not a typical cop, uh, course. Where these officers go and they learn about their own motivations, their own biases, how they can become better people at home and at work. And then I find that people who are happy at home, come to work and they're happy, provide better services, better, um, better service, period. So those are the classes that we've been to. One of the things that we helped to reshape our departments, we had a three-day post-advanced team building exercise. We ironed out a lot of things that we need to do. That's how we got our new, um, our new policy manual, our, our new fleet management system. We wrote our new, um, vision, mission statement and a collaborative effort. So everyone had buy-in into it in groups. We made it, we made a new, um, command groups to answer some of more questions. So, uh, it was very successful. It could have been dicey, but it went really well. Had to right some wrongs of the past, had nothing to do with, uh, with my command staff at the time. And we did that. It was a good therapy session. So, next slide. Part of the transparency. We, you know, you inspect, you expect what you inspect. If you don't inspect things, you're not going to know what's going on. So they know what's important to me. Transparency is hugely important to me. So we audit our cameras, we audit our vehicles and we audit uniforms. I believe what how you look is how you present, is your first line of defense. If you come into the job and you're looking sharp, people are more likely to pay attention to you. Not that they weren't looking great before, but I think they look a little bit better now. Um, we're more uniformed. Next slide, please. I believe in social media, I believe in communication, I believe in having one-on-one, but you got to use social media. And so I have a great group of young go-getters who understand technology and enjoy it. And so they do a wonderful job posting, uh, important information. Our most important information goes through Nixel, uh, through April. And my team, we will send out important information to the city and it was forty-six times last year. Good information sharing. And as you know, you know, when they know, when the information comes from the city, it comes from the PD, they know it's actual factual information. They don't have to fly by night, have a guessing what's going on in the city. They know the facts. Next slide, please. So future operational challenges. Again, twenty-six, twenty-six percent of the professional staff can retire today, twenty percent of professional staff. This creates promotional, promotional opportunities, but these opportunities are only good if we have people wanted to step into those roles. With that being said, we started with, uh, having an organizational assessment, assessment by professional, uh, post-approved organizational assessor. Met with the city manager on Monday, got her direction for what she thought she, what we needed, which was aligned with what I, I think we need. And so that will come to, um, sometime in the fall. And so what we'll look at is our beach structures. We'll look at our new CAD system, we'll look at our calls for service. With that, we'll also look at the, um, the growth of the city, uh, talking to Chad Smalley and others in the city. He'll do an interview, uh, with, uh, important, uh, staff members. We'll look at if we need to change anything, he'll look at our organizational structure. And then he'll come here and present for you, give you, give you an idea of what he thinks independently. One of the things he said to me is like, I can come here and tell you everything, but I want everything. So it's easier to have a outside person to do that. So, wow, we're going to take the effort, uh, to do that. Next slide, please. More, more challenges. We're going to try and still kind of integrate technology. You'll see a drone presentation, uh, either, I think it's slated for May. So you'll see that come here to your table, this is for you guys to, to, to discuss. Uh, we're still taking practice step into becoming a fully automated, uh, patrol vehicle fleet. You guys understand the, the council understands the, uh, the implementation, implementation needs and problems. So that is part of the future challenges. And, and we're preparing, um, to pay, play, um, to encrypt our radios so we can make sure we can talk to our, our jurisdictions who surround us. And so that has to be done by August, but that's again, a challenge. It costs us money, as you know. And, um, but it's important for us to be able to communicate with Berkeley, Oakland, San Francisco and other regions. So that's one of the things that we're going to be doing. Next slide. Thank you, thank you. That's the next slide. I definitely appreciate the fact that you're engaged, that all of you have been on the Public Safety Committee, that all of you do know our challenges that we face and you've been supportive. It's been, it's really the, the, not the only reason, but one of the reasons that crime's gone down is not like one year. It's four years of building upon what we started when I first arrived in twenty-twenty. And so again, not fully responsible for the stats, but I'm definitely take them into heart and try to drive down crime and the fear of crime. And so as a collective, we're doing that. And so I think that's it, fifteen minutes, I don't know. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Jennings. Members, any questions or comments for the chief?
Yes, thank you so much, Chief Jennings, for everything that you've done to keep our city safe. And the statistics, they definitely look encouraging. My question to you really was about, um, uh, well, one of them was the grants. Are there any grants, um, any further grants that you're able to get especially for the encryption or no?
There was no grant for the encryption. I, I asked the senators, uh, I don't know what his title was, but, uh, no, couldn't get a grant for that. So, uh, we granted for the, he's looking for the grant for the flock cameras.
I really do appreciate your department doing all this, that research and applying for those grants. That is really great for our cities, especially with their economics right now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Member Welch?
I just, I just wanted to say thank you, chief. I shared with you briefly, I was talking about our police department. And on a panel, and the question to me was about how to engage the community. And I feel like we are such an amazing example of that because people get to see our officers at community events. They were just at the Emeryville Commerce Connection event, the one-year anniversary. So I feel like our officers get to, uh, engage with officers, not when you have to call someone because you've been a victim of a crime. Or you're may, unfortunately maybe being arrested for a crime. Or it's not always under the guise of having to engage because there's been a criminal element. They get to see our officers at the Healthy Families Festival, at the Harvest Festival, at the Holiday Parade. And just really being a true community partner, I just really appreciate that. Because it takes, it takes that type of work to really build trust with the community. And so just thank you, because I know that, that comes from you, but it's implemented by the officers and everyone really just shows up. It wants to be a part of the community and seen as, um, a, a part of the fabric of Emeryville and not just folks who come to arrest you if you've done something bad.
Hundred percent agree. Thank you very much. And it's really been an emphasis of mine, besides the actual arresting of people who've done something wrong and they need to be corrected. Is secondary is engaging because exactly what you said, you're more willing to talk to us. That drives down, you're willing to tell me, hey, there's something going around the corner you might want to look at. So just walking by or not being engaged in your own community. So yeah. And the officers, I think it's also because we really hired a bunch of new folks also, and they really bought into it and it's really changed the perspective of officers.
Thank you, chief. Oh, yes, Vice Mayor.
Another question, you just said that you're going to get the grants for the flock cameras, that's great. Or maybe you at least will apply for those.
Yes, ma'am.
That's wonderful. I, at the Public Safety Committee, I had the question about the cameras, the license plate readers. Whether they are able to go ahead and provide, uh, statistics about how many people are in the city during the day. Because that's going to change over time as we get more people in because of the new development that we are anticipating.
It can't tell you how many people, it'll tell you how many cars.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, yes, again. And Vice Ma, Mayor Moore asked us about the transparency portal. It's not quite up yet, but it's going to be up, where you can actually go in and check on your, on yours for yourself.
Oh, great. That, that would be fantastic. I think it would also help with the, uh, Transportation Committee to determine the stats.
How many vehicles are going through?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful, thanks.
I think Chad has some other tools that he uses also for, uh, counting people. And, and so there's, there's tools out there.
Great.
It'll all help.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for keeping the department a representative of the city. Great job on doing the thirty-thirty. Thanks so much for that.
So just echoing my colleagues, uh, really great job on the, the report, seeing those property crime numbers go down. We know that that's no accident. It's through the hard work. So please thank the team for us. And also that, that level of community engagement, you know, please keep that up. That's, I, I think the relationship that Emeryville PD has with the community is unique and special. And I, I'm glad that we're cultivating that and fostering that. The flock camera report is really eye-opening. Two million vehicles scanned just in twenty-twenty-four since October. And that's even before all the cameras came up from the, uh, I, I know we have, uh, commercial businesses installing cameras, right? So the network is expanding even without, uh, further investment from the city or grants. I'm curious, uh, I do like the, the layout where it was the, uh, two million plates scanned, the number of, uh, associated felony vehicles. Associated crimes, vehicles that were chased out. Is there a way to, I don't know how difficult it was to put that report together, but are you guys looking at some sort of, um, monthly, uh, compilation? Or bimonthly, I guess, for the Public Safety Committee? Uh, and then perhaps, uh, the rest of council could be, um, it'd be copied on some of those stats if, if we reach out.
Absolutely, it's a great question and yes. It is a little bit cumbersome, an individual, my Sergeant Pardo does that. But it's, it's going to be part of every monthly, uh, Public Safety Committee, um, that goes out. And I think when we send it, we send it to all of you, don't we? Or do we just send it to the committee?
I, I haven't received it.
Okay, if you want it, we'll send it. Yeah.
Great.
And we are, just to, um, make sure that we are on the same page, we are, uh, it's not monthly, right? The public safety is.
Yeah, it's every other month.
Yeah, sorry, that, it was monthly when I was on it. Uh, the, the other, the last question I had was on the, uh, the drone program. And I, I remember I introduced this issue, this item as a, it's a drone as a first responder. Has that been adapted to, I saw recreating crash operations? Is that something else now?
It's, it's not something else, it's a little different. So yeah, the iteration is not drone as a first responder. We do not have the bandwidth to do that with the current staffing, but we do have the bandwidth to use the drones for, um, emergency operations procedure. Uh, to do reconstruction of vehicles, um, accidents in a, in an intersection. The, there's other, uh, needs to do it as first responder, but it's going to be part of the staff report. So you'll find out exactly what it needs. And if you want to provide us with the, the, the needs that, the other assets that we need to run the program, after you see the staff report, then we'll, we'll look at it then.
Understood, yeah, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, moving on to item five, announcement of commission and committee vacancies.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to let you know that we open an annual recruitment for our advisory bodies on April fourth. That closes on May nineteenth and applications are available on the website. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Uh, next we have council member special announcements or reports on meeting attendance. Seeing none, the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would just like to announce, uh, the weekend of April twenty-sixth, there are two events. We have the National Prescription Drug Takeback Day from ten to two at twenty-four forty-nine Powell Street. So that members of the community can participate in returning unused prescriptions. And then on April twenty-seventh, which is a Sunday of that same weekend, we have the Shoreline Cleanup from nine AM to twelve PM. Uh, we're asking for residents that are interested in the Shoreline Cleanup to meet at Shoreline Park at the Bay Trail Access Road for a fun day outdoors with the Emeryville community, refreshments and cleanup materials provided. Thank you so much.
Moving on to ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications? Seeing and hearing none, now is the time for public comment. Seeing no members of the public in attendance, we'll move to the consent calendar. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull or are there, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Madam Clerk, the rule?
Councilmember Pryforce is absent, councilmember Solomon is absent, councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next we have public hearings. Item eleven point one, resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, establishing the updated development impact phase. Members, are you amenable to waiving presentation?
Yes, I am.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I will open the, uh, the public hearing. The time is eight oh-three. Seeing no members of the public, I will close the public hearing. Um, members, are there any, uh, comments?
I can move to approve the resolution.
I will second.
Madam Clerk, the rule?
Councilmember Pryforce is absent, councilmember Solomon is absent, councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is eleven point two, resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, amending the master fee schedule. Do we have a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Brian Mora from RGS, your financial consultant. Tonight, we're going to talk to you about amending the master fee schedule for the city. Next slide. The master fee schedule is reviewed and updated each year. It is effective July first and it covers fees for services provided by the city. Under state law, the city may set fees at or below the cost recovery figure. The fees in Emeryville are based on a comprehensive fee study and cost plan that was done in twenty-sixteen. And the fees as proposed in this document would be effective on July first, twenty-twenty-five, sixty days after your adoption. In general, the proposed fees are increased by two point seven percent in the prior year in most cases, except where otherwise noted. Some fees are set or capped by the state and so they're not included in that, those changes. And they're all shown in the attached proposed schedule. Next slide. Here are some highlights and areas that we wanted to bring your attention. First of all, the sewer connection fee in the building division is based on the change in the E and R construction cost index, which is two point nine percent. So that's slightly higher than the fee adjustments in others. These fees are placed in the sewer connection fee fund, five, fund for five thirteen. And we estimate that this change will result in an additional fifty-six hundred dollars in revenue in the coming year. The next category are the State Department of Fish and Wildlife Sequa Fees, Planning Division. These fees are set by the state, not the city, and they're changed each January first. In the area of credit and debit card fees, um, there's a new credit card processor that has been retained by Community Services. And so we're proposing to increase those fees from two and a half to three percent as a pass-through. And that would be effective in both Community Services and Finance. In the Police Department, the fees for DVD copies are being removed and that eliminates a conflict with other departmental media fees in police. Sewer lateral performance security deposit is being proposed for a reduction by Public Works based on that department's study of actual cost for those services. Park rental fees and Community Services are proposed to be changed from a per day amount to a per hour fees, which will allow for more availability of the facilities. And finally, the after-school program fees will be increased by four percent to reflect, uh, rising operational costs. operational costs. Next slide. So with that, we come to our recommendation, which is to receive the staff report, accept any public comment, and then discuss the proposed fee schedule. And second, to adopt the attached resolution, which would adopt the master fee schedule as proposed, effective on July 1. Next slide. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and also we have a couple of department heads here as well to field questions if you have them.
Thank you, Brian. Members, any questions?
I have not.
I just had one. There was a, an item last year I sent to Budget and Governance, looking at the reimbursable overtime cost for police service. So this would be, take a business that wants to hire one of our police officers, and they could work that as reimbursable overtime. And I had looked at some other jurisdictions where there's administrative fees around 10% to 15%. So in New York, it was 10%, in San Francisco, it's around 14%, in Los Angeles, also between 10% to 15%. I noticed that the, well, I'm actually curious if that was looked at to see if this is a an administrative fee that could come back to the city, which, given the amount of that reimbursable overtime, could be quite significant to the city. Is anybody aware if that was discussed at Budget and Governance? Was it, was there a decision?
I am on that committee, mayor, and we didn't have any discussion about the reimbursable overtime unless Chair of the Committee remembers something to a different.
We had not discussed that, Mr. Mayor, though.
Okay, is that something that you have thoughts on?
Mr. Mayor, what I would suggest is that we are proposing to have an update to the fee study and master plan coming up after the budget process, and that is an area where we could task whoever is hired, the firm that's hired, to look at that. So, yeah, that would be something we would do.
Okay. Would it be advisable to incorporate at this time a 10% fee? What would, why would we caution against that, perhaps?
My advice would be not to do it at this time, only because we haven't done a study on what the actual cost is, and again, under state law, we have to guarantee that the costs are at or below our actual cost. But since we do have a study coming up, that would be the perfect time to do that. The other thing, too, that I'm imagining in that study is we would look at all the existing fees and also ask the departments to talk about fees that perhaps for services they're charging where they're not, are providing but not currently charging a fee, and maybe we can incorporate those as well into a future fee schedule.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Is there, is it sufficient just to make the suggestion here to?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Brian.
All right.
The time is 8:10. The public hearing is now open for this item. Seeing no members of the public, it is now closed. The time is still 8:10. Members, are there any questions or a motion on this item, or any comments or emotion?
Motion to approve the resolution as, and adopted as written.
I will second.
Madam Clerk, the rule?
Councilmember Pryforce is absent, councilmember Solomon is absent, councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no action items. A department head reports.
No report this evening, thank you.
Members, any future agenda items? The time is 8:11. This meeting is adjourned.